Now come to order. Please join me as we pledge the flag and then promote society.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands. All nation, I would rather neither is all, but liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Slavy, you're welcome.
Mr. Gaddanis?
Yes.
Mr. Kayler?
Here.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Mayor Olig? It's absent. Three present, one absent.
Uh, Mr. Slavy, any presentations this evening?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, I'll call on Councilman Gaddanis. We have a certificate of achievement for the Oasis Community Recovery Club here at Shmoken. And I assume there is representation.
We do.
Bring the worship.
Worship.
Just watch the corner.
I don't have a torch.
Oh, yeah. This is, the certificate is awarded to Oasis Community Recovery Club. recognition of their five-year anniversary in continuing efforts to help citizens of Shmoken and the surrounding areas presented on behalf of the City of Shmoken. Congratulations for five years.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, because we'll send this to the paper. Do you want to have more people as a picture or is that enough?
Sure.
Sorry, Daniel.
I thought it was being, uh...
Actually, Justin, you should be in the picture.
Member of council.
All right, count of three, look at me. One, two, three, big cheese.
Cheese.
One more. Cheese. Don't look at your... Thank you.
All right, council is going to break very briefly for an executive session on personnel and contracts.
Go back here. Right. Yep.
Is now, uh, I can find back in order. And, uh, Mr. Slavy, the next item of business on the agenda is the bid. Any bids?
Yes, we have one bid which I will ask with listener, Mr. Breckow, to, uh, share.
Thank you, Mr. Slavy. Um, there was an advertisement in the paper for sale of property of 721, 723 North Schmoken Street within the city of Schmoken. Um, the bid was opened at the workshop, work session. There was one bid that was received, uh, in the sum of $4,000. In that official, um, bid was also a 10% check, um, made payable, uh, to the city of Schmoken in the amount of $400. Uh, the individual that submitted this was in a, I heard, um, Sheldon Point, it's just a copy and it's hard for me to read on the copy. Um, they are responsible, um, for paying all costs and transfer fees related to this, all closing costs. They are accepting the property as is. Closing must deter within 30 days. So council is fine with that. Uh, we would be in motion to accept, um, this bid.
Do I have a motion to accept the bid?
I make a motion. I'll start.
Anything on the question?
Yes, uh, the CEDOC that, that we had money for that demolition. Um, we added earmarks for that. Can we defer that money since somebody is now buying here? That the city won't have to tear this down? Can we use that money and go after another building that we want to get torn down?
Yes.
We, so we will not lose it?
Correct.
There.
Well, call Mr. Slavy.
Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
You plead in favors, one absent, motion carries.
And Mr. Slavy, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. I have received a letter of resignation that they will address first from council for the time of the shift speed. I need a motion to accept that resignation.
Do we have a motion to accept those things?
Yeah, I'll start. Question?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Anything on the question? Well, call.
Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyer?
Yes.
Three days, one absent, motion carries.
Yes, uh, and as far as anyone here or watching this online, letters of interest are going to be accepted directly at City Hall up to...
Great Block.
Great Block.
August 19th.
August 19th. Um, so there will be an absentee.
Yes.
To them.
So in conjunction with that, um, is there a motion to publish that? Uh, as well as a motion to hold a special meeting on that, by an advertiser?
Yes, we're gonna have to advertise a special announcement meeting.
Yes.
I made a motion.
So that would be for August 19th at 6:00 PM.
I'll start.
We have.
We're gonna come tonight. You got any suggestions?
Hmm.
Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Do you have it, three, one absent?
The next item is motion needed to approve the prior year's recommendation of the team of the town chief starting January 1st, 2025, which I believe we're going to table.
Mrs. Boyer, I would like at this time to recommend that this, uh, item, uh, before us, before council, uh, be tabled until a later date.
I get it, I'm sorry.
Hey, you need a, uh...
Uh, I need a motion to approve the 2024. We need a motion to table that, I'm sorry.
I motion to table.
I start.
No question. Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyer?
Yes.
Motion carries, three days to table it, one abstention.
And now I, I need a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 winter maintenance agreement between Pendott and the city of Schmoken, protected Navy City Streets owned by Pendott.
I have a motion.
I'll start then.
Anything on the question? Well, call Mr. Slavy.
Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Olber, this, motion carries to... Enter into that maintenance service agreement, three days and one abstention.
All right, that brings us to citizen comments. Continue to define business listed on the agenda.
Hi, I'm Joe Lysinski, I live in 518 Pine Street. Um, I just have a question about the, uh, the resignation factor here. Um, in the past, uh, I know when Mr. Roben was appointed, um, there was advertisements made, right? And when I came on council, the ring was appointed without any advertising made. It was a council, ultimately a mayor council decision, if I'm correct. Um, there doesn't need to be a public, it's just as a courtesy. But my question is, what, as I understand a third class city code, it would be a majority of members present to be able to make a decision. Is that correct? Cause I know you said in the past, there was decisions made on things to where, cause the quorum is based on who's here today.
Oh, yes.
Uh, on who's present. So that's what I'm wondering is, even though there's three present today, if they wanted to throw a name out today and appoint somebody, could they do that? Because there's a quorum present and there would be a majority. It doesn't say in the third class city code to appoint a replacement. You need to have a, a quorum of five. You just need to have a quorum of council present to cast them. Cause if that's the case, then if you can't vote on a replacement today, or you couldn't vote on, how could you vote on any of this other stuff if, if there wasn't a full present? That's just, I just have a question on the clarity of the law.
I think that in speaking, if there was no vote or an extension, that would only be two votes. So you still need the creating of a majority for that.
Well, what happens if you come August 19th and one council member is still a no on the decision and Mayor Olber is not here again? Do we fall on our face again? Because I think that the, I, I'm just saying in my past experience of being here and seeing things happen like this in the past, it was always a majority of the form present for the meeting. And that shouldn't be held against any candidate who applied or interested or these guys here. I mean, the position's been vacant for over two months. And I mean, if, if you're not gonna come to an agreement and whatever, if you don't have, come, you know, a week from now, you don't have, you have the same three people here and two agree and one don't, do you then change the rules then and say, okay, two, one, it's good or two, three, oh, it's good? Just a question.
City council, third class city code, says that they, it's in their hands for 30 days from the effective of those.
Right, so as of right now, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we could get to the, to the first and still, I'd be there.
I, I don't disagree with anything that you said, but I'd like to say, let's just, it's only a week, let's just cross that bridge with the counter.
Okay, I was just, I was just wondering because if the same scenario happens, if the same scenario happens a week from now, we wasted an advertisement, we wasted money. And I mean, we've known that this position's been open for two months, you know, advertising the paper, the former director of the Public Works, that's a good group down there, good group of guys. And I'd like to see them have some direction going into the most important part of the, the, the year coming up, the budgeting and contracts. I'm just looking out for them guys. And I know they've reached out to me and they have concerns too. But I'm just saying, if the same scenario were to happen a week from now, what happens? You know, I guess we're gonna hope on a prayer.
Well, it depends.
All right.
And I, I would just like to add that I've been in favor of advertising any time there's been a resignation for a long time, as opposed to simply throwing names out, you know, well, of people who have expressed interest. So I really have been in favor of doing it that way so that we have a process. And it's, and I think it appears more open to the public, um, more transparent, and so I'm more comfortable with that. Um, and that's been my view of it. But I agree that there could be a potential problem, but I hope that's not the case.
Right, and here's one last thing, has anybody that expressed their interest in the position as of now? Or, and if they have, are those letters going to be counted toward a, from this day forward passed advertisement or do they have to be reset? I mean, it's a public seat. It's a public seat, so I mean, the public has the right to know.
I know, I need letters and...
I have, I have received.
What's that?
Would be counted.
It would be counted. And you have received letters?
Yes, sir.
Or is the public allowed to know who applied?
I don't believe we answer that question.
Well, I mean, if you did write to know, it could still be, even the...
Well, I, we came into this with Scott Roben where everything was done behind the scenes and everything was quiet until the meeting came up. So, I mean, it's a public seat, it's open, it's...
I think they'll have a...
It's not personnel, Frank Knopf was dead wrong on that. So that's why I'm just saying it's a public seat. If there's interest, the public should know who's applying because they're here for the next year and a half. So that's all I'm asking.
I just don't have a project, I'm naming who I have received letters of interest from. And if this person's not gonna tell me, uh, and I'm just thinking, just like, tell me something pretty safe, go, you know, please, and somebody idiotic.
You can do it. Then answer this question.
Yeah, I'm Doc Fields.
Yes, I have received, uh, a letter from, uh, Michael J. McLaughlin. And I have also received a letter... It's from Joseph Lysinski. I have not received any other letters, those are the two that I have in my possession. I've had them, uh, for a couple of days now. Watch out.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Robert Vois, PO Box 533, Schmoken. I read here about, uh, 504 compliance requirements for buildings, commercial buildings. Is there any sort of effort to promote architectural integrity of older buildings that do not have ADA compliant, uh, railings or metal or ramps or things like that? And there's a, it says there's a position that you're hiring. Is that an unfunded mandate from the state or federal government? Or will there be funds provided to Schmoken in order to cover that position? And I guess the other question is, is it a paid position?
Well, in the section, uh, 504, the officer has normally been, uh, Mr. Bob Slavy. I believe that that's going to change, uh... That would have to be voted upon. Uh, I don't believe that the position is open. Um, it's a reservation that we're early going to pass this evening for the compliance officer to keep in that position.
Okay. All right, then another question. How broadly was the 721, 723 Schmoken Street sale advertised? Was it just in the news item?
I don't know, maybe it was just... Was it just advertised in the news on?
Yes.
Just Facebook or anything?
It is on City's Facebook. Facebook, it was, it was in the news item.
And then the last question is, when will the Independence rehab or Independence renovation, or whatever you want to call it, refurbishing of the streets on Independence Street? When will that break ground?
I can, I can talk about that when I do my update.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Any other citizens?
Okay, so...
Hmm, I need a motion to accept the minutes of the city of Schmoken council meeting of July 8th, 2024.
I have a motion, uh, I'll start.
Anything on the question? Well, call.
Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Olber, this, motion carries, three days, one abstention.
I need a motion to approve the deals from July 2024. Is this on the deal list?
Okay.
A second.
One second.
Anything on the question?
Last few prescriptions.
Councilman DeGannitz?
Yes.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Olber? Motion carries, three days, one abstention.
All right, the next thing we have director's reports, Council Finance. I am the Council Finance person, unfortunately, our predator's not with us this evening. She has had some health issues. I don't have that report, um, but I'm sure she will have that to me as, as soon as I have it. It will appear on the, uh, Facebook page and, uh, on college. Uh, Parks and Public, please, please keep your hands up.
Yes, um, just so everyone's aware, the summer program for the free lunches will be finishing up this week. Uh, they, they very successful again, thank you for everyone who participated with that. Before we finish up, Chief Minister, Kylance, September 9th?
We just talked about it.
September 9th is the K9 Swim, which floods the police apartment, so...
That's the 7th.
Seven.
The 7th, yeah, sorry, thank you. Um, so, the pool has been big of the road break this year, um, maybe because of the heat wave, we haven't had any problems. Um, that way, I can just say everything's winding down, that way, everything's good. That's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Councilman, you have a public figure?
Okay. I report first. A service call for July is two, fire calls, or service call two, fire call 18, fire alarm four, hazardous conditions three, emergency services eight, special incident six, which is a total of 41. And then working fire four, and in mutual aid 15, received mutual aid one. Then for code office, you have mental revenue is 1,500, rental registration is 1,500, parking permits is 1,504.98 cents, other permit is $4,130, dumpster permit is $550, headworks permit is $100, zoning permit is $90, third party inspectors $3,390, which is a grand total of $7,134.98. Code enforcement activity, complaints addressed 133, notices, so violations sent 63, citations written 32, landlord inspections completed is 9, post unfest 6, fire calls 3, warrants 25, and that's all I have.
Okay. And are you okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be all right.
You okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I just don't want it to pass out, the addition of the score on your...
All right, Mr. King, your conclusion?
Uh, just quickly, I'm having the council to, uh, address, but I just want to quickly interreg, where I said at the workshop about the, uh, control of our treasure office, we had, uh, with the loss of Larry Straxler last fall, the year, September, uh, all of our uploads and downloads to the cable companies had to be accomplished, pretty much on a fly, Bob and Bob that fell broke his legs, so we were in a really tough spot for last year, but things are falling in place and now Bob's doing better, hiring balance, uh, insisting, uh, counting, and, uh, whatever the title is, I don't know, just call that. Uh, but we're up to date as of July 31st, so I look at the council. Thank you. I'm also speaking for the treasurer now, although we're one month behind on the reports. They will be in next month.
Thank you. Chief Sider?
Nothing for council.
City Hall.
Is this the first time yet? Sure. Um, at this time, I'd like to call to order the CDVG, uh, Community Development Program Program, the final public hearing. Um, and it is 6:30 PM. So before, um, leaving, I would like everyone to sign the attendance log if you haven't already. Um, the purpose of this hearing is to review the projects selected for the 24, 2024 CDVG application. I'd like to call the attention to the agenda in front of you. Um, the city has selected projects for funding, a street reconstruction phase two, $176,675. Removal lighted structures, phase two, $75,717, and CEDOC administration, $53,700, for a total of $306,092. The city has created a list of most hazardous lighted properties and will work to gain control of the properties as they can and to demolish private property when it poses an emergency situation with removal of lighted structures phase two funding. All properties selected for demolition have negative property value and will have been vacant for at least a year to avoid removing houses for LMI individuals. Upon completion, lots will be restored grass. In response to the street reconstruction phase two, that would be Washington Street between Independence Water and from 8th, 1A, from Commerce to Independence. And this would consist of a milling to keep the utility lines accessible by manholes in the street and a 25 millimeter base repair to extend the life of the paving. The paving will consist of a tack coat, a scratch coat, and a vinyl wearing coat. The road work will, like, result in extending the useful life at least seven years. And I'd like to turn your attention to page two of your packet. This is the draft resolution to apply, um, the grantee, the city of Schmoken, will be formally considering and approving at the public meeting this evening. The resolution officially directs CEDOC to submit the application to the Department of Community and Economic Development on behalf of the city and provide approval of the chairman to sign the required application pages. The next page of your packet is a fair housing re- resolution for 2024, and that lists the number of call for any complaints or grievances regarding fair housing issues. And then on the last page, this is section 504, um, the draft of resolution for 2024, naming Mr. Robert Slavy as the official 504 officer and contact for any 504 complaints or issues. So at this time, if there are no further comments, I adjourn the CDVG 2024, uh, funding area. Do it.
I'm just reading the motions now, just so we know.
Sure. All right. A motion, I need a motion to approve CDVG projects and allocations for effort wide 2024 funding consideration as intended.
A motion. One second.
Anything on the question?
Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Olber, this, motion carries, three days, one abstention.
I need a motion to approve Res- Resolution 2024-07 to submit to the, the city of Schmoken, FSY 2024 Community Development Law Grant Application to the Department of Community and Economic Development.
A motion. One second.
Anything on the question?
Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Motion carries, three days, one abstention.
A motion is needed to readapt the following resolutions and find for decision Schmoken in accordance with the federal and state regulations of the Community Development Law Grant Program as submitted by timely track to CEDOC. Resolution 2024-08, section 504, resolution, and resolution 2024-09, fair housing resolution, both previously adopted on July 10th, 2023.
A motion. One second.
Anything on the question?
Mr. DeGannitz?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Olber? Motion carries, three days, one abstention.
Hello, uh, Mayor, uh, interim, interim, and council. Uh, Betsy Kramer from CEDOC here, just a few updates of what's going on this month. Uh, first of all, Mr. Vois, to answer your question, I was also gonna share with everybody else tonight, so, but the Independence Street downtown makeover. Um, where we're at right now is we did select a firm that is Schumberg Barragan Associates. They've been working with Pendott, um, so the total amount that we were able to receive from the appropriations was $2,675,000. Uh, for your knowledge, that will not be able to, that's not enough to do the entire street from Market Street to Schmoken Street. Ideally, we are actually gonna go all the way to 6th Street and Schmoken Street. So what's happening right now is we, they, Schumberg Barragan...
So what's happening right now is we, they, Schumberg Barragan, so this is our SGA, is working on the actual plan, and they're going to break the project up into phases. So we're going to get done as much as we can with this first pot of money. And then also, I'm going to be requesting, uh, permission to apply for a PennDOT multimodal grant in November in order to get more of it done. So, um, where it's at right now is, once again, the PennDOT is the intermediary who's actually doing the connection. I'm kind of just reporting on it. I'm not actually funded to do the project, but I'm just here to report on it for you. Um, they are in compliance with, uh, PennDOT. They had to kind of get all their contracts and all their subcontractors into their, the PennDOT system, which is ECMS. Um, so the next step that's going to be happening is very soon I'll be contacted by a consultant to work with the city. They come up with a steering committee. They will tell me who they want on that steering committee. Uh, so no need to contact me and say, I wanna be on the steering committee. That's something the consultant will work with the city for. Um, and so once again, so that, I can't tell you the exact day or month even if that's gonna break around, but this is gonna be a very quick moving project in grant world. Um, we're also coordinating because there's several other projects that are happening right now in the independent street, including a railroad crossing. It's getting completely redone, and that's on, um, it's not a street that is just, it's on the independent street. It's down toward Shemoken Street. Um, also the Eighth Street Bridge is getting redone, and then Aqua is redoing the waterline through independent streets. So this project is working in coordination with all those projects. Um, so also, we're, we're kicked off the, uh, trip, the safe streets for all grants. Uh, we have our first, uh, safety working group that met on Friday, Aug- August second. And, um, so we found some discrepancies between what's the crash data that the state has listed and what our local buyer and police actually noted. So we're gonna work on making sure that that information is correct, and then we will be able to do an action plan. And the reason why making sure that information is correct on PennDOT site is because I need to apply for more funds to actually get implementation dollars. And I'm gonna need to prove that we actually have problems at these sections. That's why it's so important that we do this. Uh, we are right now working on, uh, a large community event to have public input on this. And as soon as I have the date, you'll be the first to know. Um, uh, also, we're waiting on a quite a few breaks, and we're waiting to find out if we were successful with that, and once again, you'll be first to know. As soon as I know, you'll know. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Justin, and then he's gonna turn it over to the mayor for this. Justin? There you go.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone involved with the national layout. It started out very well until the rain moved in. And I'm grateful that they're gonna continue that and do a, a future event. Um, currently this week I received four RFPs for, uh, the bridge over, for the volunteer park. We're going to be evaluating them this week and selecting one. And I'm currently researching some grants, and I'll be asking for permission to go after those in the next meeting. And we have a lot of aside grants still, also, if anybody's interested in applying for those that the city all have available information. And then it just springed from me after they have all filled out. And I've been continuing my training for my position. I've been going to State College with the downtown center. And this week, actually, the director's coming to Shemoken to show my art in Shemoken. So hopefully I make some things move along as well. Uh, that's it for me. I'll turn it over to Matt.
Uh, hi everyone. I'm Matt McCallum. I'm the American Board of Fire. I'm presenting for the next two. Uh, the biggest update we had is that, um, two weeks ago, we applied for the more grant, which is in this law opportunities for rest, fits, and energy efficiency program, uh, and this will cover, uh, level two commercial energy audit in, uh, City Hall and at the, uh, Eric Legion Building Library. Um, and this will also cover, uh, schematic designs. And eventually we'll hopefully buy down a, uh, well that the city can take down. Um, and so this is all, you know, just to steer us into a more sustainable, energy efficient route, uh, and see what, you know, possibilities there are for City Hall all kinds, uh, that building. Um, that is me.
Thank you, Matt. Alright, the next thing on, on the agenda is, um, we have several items under new business and those that are referenced that we can, uh, include items one through eight together. So I'm asking for a motion, um, to approve items one through eight, um, under new business. Mm-hmm. As the air. Mm-hmm.
Second.
Anything on the question?
Mr. Peggins?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries three days, one extension.
Uh, anything, Mr. Slavy, under unfinished business? Words in three days? Ian, Mr. Peggins?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Tonight would be a first reading of an ordinance in the city of Shemoken, of Northern County, Pennsylvania, commending chapter forty-four of the Fire Bureau. Whereas the city of Shemoken wishes to modify chapter forty-four of the Fire Bureau ordinance, now therefore being ordained by the Council of City of Shemoken that section forty-four to six shall be revised as follows. The chain of command has been modified only to eliminate a second lieutenant. So it's Director of Public Safety, Chief, Assistant Chief, Deputy Chief, Battalion Chief, Captain, and Lieutenant. Section two, section forty-four seven shall be revised as follows. Qualifications for captains and lieutenants. Each state country shall have a captain and lieutenant. To be eligible for the office of captain or lieutenant, the individual must reside within ten miles of the seance in Shemoken. It must be licensed, all by driver, the apparatus for his or her companies, to visit a verified terminal office. A candidate must have completed and received a certificate for fundamentals of firefighting or essentials of firefighting or firefighter one certification. Structural burn session, which may be received as part of subsection C above. For the truck company, one requires a national incident management system NIMs one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred. Essentials of firefighting, firefighter one or two. Hazmat operations slash current hazmat pressure. Aerial operations, truck company operations one. As far as the engine company, um, national incident management system NIMs one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred. Essentials of firefighting, firefighter one or two. Hazmat operations slash, slash current hazmat pressure. For engine company operations, five pump operations one. For rescue company, national incident management system NIMs one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred. Essentials of firefighting, firefighter one or two. Hazmat operations slash current hazmat pressure. Thirty hours of non-suppression. Vehicle rescue operations or technician. As for this materials, operations without a pressure. National incident management NIMs one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred. And shall be due to captain and lieutenant to report to the chief in writing before the last day of each month, which call for assistances or per company responsible to. With respect to qualifications for chief, assistant chief, deputy chief, and battalion chief, uh, very similar, um, requirements as outlined um, as I've read, except fundamentals of firefighting or essentials of firefighting. Firefighter, one certification. Structural burn session, which may be received as part of subsection A one. Thirty hours of additional fee as they approve structural firefighting for building construction course of firefighter two certification. As for this materials, operations with valid pressure. National incident management system NIMs one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, seven, and eight hundred. Certification is prescribed by FEMA for those persons with multi-jurisdictional command. Introduction to fire officer sixteen hour classroom for firefighter officer one certification. Incident safety officer, arson detection sixteen hour or arson investment, investigation sixteen hour. So the candidate must have served his or her respective company as a line officer for five years prior to the candidate taking office. All remittances, which are inconsistent, or here's why the appeal, will take effect ten days after enactment. These changes were prescribed by, um, the city Fire Bureau after leaving, presented to, uh, members of council. So, I haven't said that. First, motion for the first reading.
I request a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh five, commending chapter forty-four of the Fire Bureau ordinance.
A motion. Second.
Anything on the question?
Answer the part.
Yeah.
Anything? Roll call, Mr. Sider.
Counselor McPeggins?
Yes.
Counselor McTaylor?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Ollard is absent. Motion carries three days, one extension.
Before citizens' comments, I want to recognize Jeff Hager, uh, our emergency management director. Jeff, is there anything that you want to raise to the attention of council?
No, not speeding, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, the next thing, citizens' comments, anyone?
Before getting to the podium, I would like everyone who's playing to speak to be sure to suck, to sign in on the designated sheet. Thank you.
I need some pictures.
I can't.
Can I hand them out?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Just be careful with the little.
Well, there's certain ones that they mix and mix. We see your approach, but that's the worst.
Watch where it was in front of you. It's set. That would be possible. Yeah, that would be small. Thanks for the wire, Tracy. I'll wait out.
I'll try and get through this as we're fairly fast. So my name is Tracy Trask, I live at twenty North Marshall Street. Hi Tracy. Yeah, I'm sorry, okay. Do you want me to repeat that? Okay, my name is Tracy Trasky. I live at twenty North Marshall Street. I was born and raised here in Shemoken. I've lived on my cattle hill for fifty-two years. Thank you for gathering here today to discuss an issue that has profoundly affected our communities, our community and our quality of life. Yes, here is to health and sanitation, food, vegetation control, vehicle management, waste management, and animal control. In every neighborhood, maintaining health and sanitation is not just a personal responsibility, but a communal one. When these standards are neglected, it doesn't only affect the individual, individuals directly involved, but also their neighbors and the entire community. I stand before you today to share the significant negative impacts that arise when these codes are not followed, particularly focusing on troubling situation that has deeply affected me and my family. Imagine a home in your neighborhood left in a state of disrepair with overgrown vegetation, abandoned vehicles, and animals left unattended inside. The neglect of health and sanitation codes in such a home leads to a cascade of issues that ripple through our community. According to the city of Shemoken ordinances, the following sections are deemed quality of life violations. They are all listed on forms that I handed out. And they were enacted on, I believe it's the eleventh day of April two thousand twenty-two. Firstly, when a property, right, is not maintained accordingly to health and sanitation standards, it becomes a breeding ground for pests such as roaches, bedbugs, and other rats. These pests do not know or respect property boundaries. They spread, infecting nearby homes and forcing neighbors to spend their hard earned money on pest control treatments. This isn't just an inconvenience, it's a financial burden that none of us should have to bear because of someone else's negligence. Furthermore, vegetation control is critical for preventing overgrowth that can harbor pests and create unsightly conditions. When lawns are not mowed and brushed, it's left to grow and can even obstruct sidewalks and pathways posing safety hazards. I'm gonna skip over the abandoned vehicle parts because we don't really have any currently at this time in our neighborhood. But that is part of the code of quality of life. This is another big one. Waste management is another crucial aspect. When garbage and litter are not properly disposed of, they create foul odors and attract vermin. This directly impacts our ability to enjoy our own homes and our outdoor spaces. The stench from neglected waste can make it unbearable to sit on our porches or enjoy our yarns robbing us of simple pleasures of our daily lives. One of the most distressing issues listed it. Neglect of animal control. Animals left unattended inside a home can create unbearable smells that permeate the neighborhood. This isn't just an inconvenience, it's a serious health hazard. The odor from an neglected home can prevent neighbors from enjoying their own porches and outdoor spaces. The presence of animals without proper care also raises concern about their welfare and their potential spread of diseases. In my own experience, the neglect of a nearby property has forced my family and me to take measures to protect our home. The infestation of roaches and bedbugs from the neglected house next door has required us to spend significant amounts of money on spraying and treatment. This financial strain is unfair and unjust, especially when it stems from someone else's disregard for community standards. It is clear that the enforcement of health and sanitation codes, vegetation, vegetation control, vehicle management, waste management, and animal control is not just a matter of policy, but of public health and community well-being. When one property is neglected, it can have a domino effect, negatively affecting the entire neighborhood. We must work together to ensure that these codes are respected and enforced for the sake of our health, our finances, and our quality of life. And I have submitted photos from the property, and you can all look at them. And I thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Mr. Drasky. Who is the address of the property? What are the address property?
Twelve North Marshall Street.
Twelve North Marshall. Does someone live in there?
That multiple people live there.
In that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
And with all due respect, sir, we've been in that property, and I'm pretty sure that it was quoted in the news item where our chief was in a scuffle, was bitten, had urine dumped on him. And obviously, when there is commotion out front, especially right next door, you come out, and he, um, said about having to go home and take his clothes off and get a shower and.
And wear more.
It is that bad that if they open the door, you can't even breathe. You have to go inside. You can't have your windows open. It's, it's just, it is unbearable to me that not only do I have to live next to that, but that somebody lives in there. but that somebody lives in there is even more disturbing. And the code officer himself has been in there multiple times as well. Uh, these are the same people that we've had to have sewers already come up because they have dumped actual feces and urine into the sewer. Human feces, that is, not animal.
They have no water?
Uh, there is water, but I can tell you there is no furnace. If you see in that picture, there are two space heaters amongst all the filth. It is something that you would see on the show of waters. That is a complete fire hazard. I mean, that entire lot would grow, go up.
Thank you. Thanks, ma'am. Ma'am?
Yes.
I will contact you tomorrow in regards to a meeting that will set up with attorney Greco. And we will meet with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slade.
Uh, yes, Chief of Staff, or Office Sergeant, Chief of Police.
Thank you very much.
I will contact.
There are multiple neighbors here on Marshall Street. They're not speaking, they just came and supported me and you know, what we experience on a daily basis.
Do you have anything else that you folks can bring to us, possibly on what she's?
Yes, when they walk past our house, the odor, and I live a block away, and the odor comes in my door when they walk past us, they are disgusting.
Okay.
It's unbearable. It's unbearable. You can sit out on the porch, you can enjoy the outside. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, what I'd like to add to this is I've been here a while now. And occasionally, the situation is so egregious that citizens come and present, as this lady has this evening. And it seems to me that one of the most important things is, well, there are two things. First, to be heard. To be heard. That's very important for anybody. To be validated and heard, this is my situation. And for council and staff of the city, the chief and everybody, to understand how extreme this particular problem is, and I know that it's repeated around the city. We do know that. The second thing is, is it's important for council in such an extreme situation to try to offer a solution. So hopefully, now, you know, your neighbors, your neighborhood has been heard. Hopefully, council can come up with a solution. And attorney Greco and Mr. Slade are going to meet with you, you, um, as the representative, and I hope we can come, this, this is what you're calling.
It is maybe there's, um, also, um, my personal thought. Uh, so that he would, um, understand what you're here. It may be about how, you know, come and treat our home, just, you know, the fact that we have to continuously protect ourselves. For that.
Please put your hands up. I'm sorry, you're in touch with me.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Um, so did you sign in? After your speech.
After the speaker, can you start with this?
My name's Brian Linkowski. I live at twenty-five North Marshall Street across from, uh, Tracy we just spoke. Um, I permanently moved here with my wife two months ago, um, from across the state, with kids are here. Um, to add to that, she might have said it, but I think it's important that animal control gets involved in this whole issue. Um, across the street, it is at nine, um, North Marshall on my side of the street. And they have dogs over there that aren't always, um, on leash and what they, where they need to be. I don't know if that's an animal control, a police issue, or what, but I have three dogs. I put them on a leash. Um, there could be a problem. Um, there was already a problem in the neighborhood where I took their dog back to his, the owner's house. When I handed the dog to the owner, the dog growled at him. I'm like, always do that? And he goes, that's my wife's dog. Well, anyhow, that's all I, but I, I don't know, uh, along with the sanitation and how bad, um, houses can get and how she described it all. I, I'm here to support Tracy. Um, and, um, I hope, you know, it's, starts in the community, it's gotta start there, you know. You know, we're the city and, uh, needs to be involved in this issue on Marshall Street. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sir, please sign in.
Sir. Any other citizen comments?
I want to distribute to mayor and council two packets of photographs here. First off, our trade road, beat fifteen North Schmalken Street. Lifetime resident of the city of Schmalken. I've served on this council for twenty-four years. So I know the problems you got. They're only getting worse. I'd like to commend Chief Psycho and his force for what he's able to do with the situations in the city of Schmalken. Thank you. If you two sent some pictures, send one down the inside. Give it a please. And these are only two locations, and there are others. One is directly across the street from me at the corner of Schmalken and George Street. The old parking lot of Schmalken is quite bad. Which they sold the building. Guess who? Public enemy number one, who was declared by Mr. Yorick when he was mayor fifteen years ago. And the problems you had with him then. He also has another location on Commerce and Pearl Street, which the city sold him that lot. And he would have a stipulation that he could not place vehicles on that lot. Within a week, there was ten vehicles there. These vehicles are across the street from me for a number of years. People come up and take parts off these vehicles, leave for what they don't want, lay in the lot. Along with oil, junk, everything you can think of. It's becoming entirely disgusting. It's downgrading the community, it's downgrading our neighborhoods. Help out in the future. You live a block away. I am getting tired of it. This guy is slippery. The last time the city went after him for this, ended up paying him twenty-some thousand dollars, because they caught, lost the lawsuit. I certainly hope there's something that a better solicitor can do than what he had tried to do in the past. I am getting tired of it. He's bringing down the community, all over the community. These are photographs, like I said, of two areas. He has it down at the Rock Street, uh, skating rink is another area of his junkyard. And his transfer station of tracks. I mean, I don't, uh, don't want to condemn anyone that wants to do a business in the community. But let's do it correctly. Let's not make the community worse than it is. It's failing as is. Lot, look at all the homes you're putting the red X's on because of how bad they have become. I know, I dealt with it. I was the director of public safety for many years, but like I said, it has gotten worse. If we don't stop this, he got, by understanding, he got chased out of other communities. They were able to do it other places. Why do we have to go nothing? I personally went to him last week. And I said, well, Robert, I'm telling you, I'm going to the city council meeting Monday night to complain about your junkyard. He said, well, you better, that you told me to my face instead of stabbing you in the back. I said, that's why I came to tell, right to your face. So he knows that I'm here to complain about. I certainly hope there's something can be done. It's, it's becoming beyond disgusting. There, kids play in those cars across the street. Sooner or later, somebody's gonna get hurt. There must be a thousand cats in the neighborhood living in these cars. It's just getting to worse every day. I hope, I know you have talked about an ordinance that's supposed to eliminate somebody's problem. I certainly can hope you can make progress. Thank you, mayor of council, for your time.
Mr. Roberts, I'll be here. Uh, the solicitor has told me that we will be in touch with you. And, uh, don't forget to take it here from us. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Just one quick request, um, for these kinds of things, um, if there is a date and time of complaint with a photo, that might serve people a little bit better in winning a lawsuit against any potential, uh, you know, defendant in these matters. So just, uh, just throwing this out there, if you can accumulate times, dates, photos, and make an, uh, a detailed list of what you consider infractions, and then marry those up against the, uh, actual ordinances, county or city or whatever. That would be helpful in winning a case. When you're hearing that you lost the last case, it's dismayed. But just that, um, that's, that is a comment. And just to reiterate my last question, um, for the breaking ground on independence, we don't, we don't even have an estimate yet, and can you confirm that it's to be completed by twenty twenty-five at some point? Or is that not?
I think there's like, again, twenty twenty-six, it has to be completed.
Twenty twenty-six?
Okay.
Okay.
That first phase. We will be getting more, we need to get more funding to do the whole thing.
Okay, alright. So, so what I'm hearing is the streets will not be torn up this winter. Is that accurate or no?
That's very accurate, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Unless it's Aqua. So the streetscape will be, but Aqua might. That's what Justin just said, so.
And then with regard to the complaints and the, uh, vectors for disease, bedbugs, and other biting insects, um, and the fact that they're keeping pets on those properties that are, that are a problem. We may not live in that neighborhood, but I do live in the city and I'm concerned as well because, you know, I look at these properties and I think, okay, this is the reason why I don't buy a room home. Sorry, we're not sorry. So, you know, if there's anything that other people in the community can do to help, just, uh, I wanna let people know that, uh, you know, this sort of thing should not be tolerated. On the other hand, is it an owner or a renter who owns these properties? If it's a renter.
It's an owner.
Okay, it's an owner, okay. Different scenario, so understood. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, there is no, no further business. We adjourn the meeting. Meeting is adjourned.